I've been trying to communicate with the county, the Coatesville School District Solicitor. I left a couple of messages and I sent an email. Didn't get through to him. I did find a staff person today that told me that she would make sure that he sees the email and gets back to me because they're gonna have to adopt a resolution. And it's a simple resolution. I actually have the one they did in 2013. We can tailor it. It won't be a lot of work. Once that happens, then we have to get in touch with the county. And actually, I'll start that before. I won't wait. The county typically does, if the school district and the township are on board, the county typically follows suit. So those are the steps that have to go forward.
And I did talk to Commissioner Marion and she agreed that if we may just need to come make a presentation to them, sort of like we did to Coatesville.
Do you want to try to get that ball rolling then?
Yeah.
They're pretty strict about sunshine meetings and when you have to get on agenda and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so I said to her, I would reach out to her staff and Commissioner Maxwell's staff and try to get on the agenda with them.
Okay.
We just think too, also, if we go, we take the roadshow to the county, that's just another exposure that people see that we're trying to do something on Lincoln Island.
Right, okay, so if you want me to invite what you might want to do, I'll forward you the email that I sent to the Coatesville School District Solicitor.
I have that.
Okay, oh, I thought we did. So similar type of email should go to whoever you want, Nicole first auto, the solicitor, or if you want to go right to the commissioners, however you want to handle that.
Okay.
Just let me know what you need assistance with.
Okay.
Okay?
So you think I should start that then?
I would start that now.
Okay.
Yeah, because again, you know, they have their own parameters for when, what you have to do to get onto an agenda. They have two different meetings of a month, so it'd be good to get that ball rolling.
I'll do that.
But the agenda item for you is to go ahead and authorize the advertisements, the ordinance. The resolution does not have to be advertised, but the ordinance does.
Right, that's first. And then next meeting, we would approve the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll approve both, the resolution and the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't have it in your packet because I was working through that list. I wanted to update it. I want to make sure that your resolution has the current owner's name. So I got it done, but I didn't get it done in time to get it into your packet. And I spoke with Mr. Mahn and we agreed that you can do them both in the same night.
Absolutely.
One right after the other.
Yeah, I remember seeing it on my iPad, but I don't have it here, so that makes sense. All right.
So can somebody make a motion?
So moved.
There you go. Yeah, move your second all ear on the right side. Got that Denise? All right, and any questions? Any questions from commissioners and of course, any questions from residents?
Nothing from residents at this point.
Historic moment here. All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Beautiful.
Okay, so we'll get that going. And again, if you need help with commissioners, let me know.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have.
Thank you for all your great work, really.
Good to go.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Great weekend everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
Get the ice cream ordered, everyone.
Well, we'd already discussed. Okay, yeah, we can just mention, yeah, Commissioner Kennedy just mentioned, you know, to make it known that we had a 6:30 workshop session earlier for the historical resource ordinance, just for the public's knowledge. All right, next on the agenda, Township Engineer, Al, right?
Yes.
Okay, I remembered this time.
Just call me Al.
The demolition of 258 Coursier Drive was advertised on Penn bid, and on June 27th, we opened the bids and we received three bids. The bids, the base bid was to demolish the structure, restore the area, and there was an alternate bid to remove and transport all and dispose of all hazardous, non-hazardous, and all other waste from the site. The base bid came in at $72,737, and with the alternate, the low bidder was at $73,600. And on both items, the base bid was Brightfields Inc., and we're recommending to work the base bid plus the alternate.
And we have... Sixty thousand? Much from the grant?
Yes, I'm just trying to look.
Yeah, okay. I thought it was sixty.
I believe it is, and that it is either fifty-nine or sixty-nine. Even can ta...
Fifty-nine or sixty-nine thousand?
That's what I'm trying to find.
Okay.
It's gonna take me a minute.
I hope it is sixty-nine thousand.
Be nice.
And is alternate a necessary? I would say yes, but I'm just asking your professional opinion.
Yes, yes. We want to have the material disposed of.
Instead of throwing in the lake?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it'll get rid of the geese. Hey, we'll leave those geese alone.
Our mics are on.
The cost for having a disposive, just so I break it out, is $863. So that's the additional money.
Oh, okay.
So the total grant was $65,600.
Where are we gonna get the...
Eight thousand?
The other eight thousand. Typically, we would take it from fund balance.
Honestly, we have enough from bond proceeds. We'll be able to take it from there.
I'm good with that. The references for Brightfield, very good.
Yeah.
Exceptional. Lot of information.
Very true.
So I appreciate you forwarding that to us. Okay, commissioners, any questions on this?
No.
Residents? Not at this time. I will entertain a motion to approve the lowest qualified bidder for the project in the amount of $73,600 for Brightfield Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Thank you, Al. Appreciate it. Ah, you too.
You too.
Have a good night.
Take care, man.
Hey, Ms. Denny, County Manager, what do we have?
Yes, on the agenda this evening, we had received a couple of weeks ago, and this was both for the CTMA and for the township, the Portnoy Associates, which is a legal group that does all of our delinquent collections. It is such a specialized area of the law because of the amount of various laws that go into collections and privacy and, you know, leans on people's properties and it is very specialized. Portnoy has been, I mean, they're used across the state of Pennsylvania. You know, Ms. Camp will even tell you they are exceptional at what they do. You know, it's come the time, I think, everybody is updating fees these days. So on the agenda this evening, if the board wants to make a consideration of this under ordinances and resolutions, there is a request for consideration to advertise an ordinance approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as a part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts. So up to the board if they wish to do so. I believe the municipal authority, did it make the agenda this week or it'll be probably on your next agenda?
Might be on the next one.
Okay, yeah. Of course, we, Tony, you know, we've used Portnoy how many years? Decades, really. They do an excellent job.
They really do.
As far as the fees, I take it some of them have just increased. But I still believe it's worth it.
I think it's absolutely worth it. I mean, we run on a skeleton crew in all of our departments here. I mean, we just don't have the structure here to have an employee or employees that would be doing nothing but collections. We don't have enough people and frankly, it really wouldn't be cost efficient for us. When you look at what the cost of legal bills, certified letters, you know, it just isn't worth it for us to do it internally.
We use them because they're, you know, they're legal expertise. The legalities change so often when it comes to collections, especially for CTMA. And, you know, it's gotta be just right and follow to the T. So we're probably one of about four or five municipalities that don't use them 100%. Jester County and Delaware County. So that kind of gives you an idea how much they are valued, the work that they do. Something to consider.
Okay.
They are used statewide, actually.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, obviously, they have offices here, but...
On a local area, but...
People throughout the state of Pennsylvania utilize them.
Commissioners, any questions on this?
They're getting really good props, and I...
I've seen them collect like ten, twelve, fifteen-year-old invoices from the sewer end of it. Just out of nowhere.
It's amazing, yeah. Their collection rate is very good.
Questions from public? Oh, I'm sorry, Lorraine, did you have...? Okay.
None at this time.
All right. I will entertain a... Yeah, entertain a motion.
A request for consideration to advertise.
Advertise, right. That's what I'm reading here. Okay, so we're gonna advertise it first.
Yes, advertise an ordinance approving appointment of solicitor, interest assessment, and attorney fees and collection fees added to the amount collected as part of unpaid municipal claims for delinquent accounts.
Could not have said it any better. Thank you.
He's my best fan of white there.
You gotta do this, though, Kristen.
I'm gonna have to practice.
All right, do I have a motion?
They're moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Which is good, five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, that was it for Ms. Denny, all right?
Yes.
Ordinance and resolution, the only other one we had outstanding is the tabled one for designating response territories. I think we are still...
We're working on a date, aren't we?
Yeah, we wanted to...
I've been in contact with both, somebody at Minkwist and Westwood. And the only reason that I'm in contact with Westwood is that currently the Washington Hose Company does not have a medic on an ambulance to begin with, so they will have to pick up some of the slack that, without that. Now, Washington Hose is going through the process to have a medic on each ambulance, but that could take months as well as the equipment, from what I've heard, has been ordered. But just like everything else in the pandemic, it's, it could be months for delivery on that stuff too. As well as trying to hire people and staff up and, you know, make sure. Medic 93 ran about 5,000 calls in this area in a year, and the Westwood, the Minkwist, the Euclid, they're gonna have to pick up those dropped calls because of Medic 93 not being around anymore. And like I said at the last meeting, this isn't nobody's fault. This is Tower Health punching us in the gut again on the way out the door. So, yeah, it's just, it's a vast, and Tower Health could have done it at the end of the year and allowed us time to discuss that budget for that, and, you know, but they chose not to do that.
Yeah, they're leaving, what, September?
End of September.
September 1st.
Yeah.
So Westwood is anticipating having, they will be the closest probably most times to the VA to northern parts of Callan Township, my area, Reesville Road, Fisherville Road, because they have a substation at Wagon Town. So, you know, Reesville Road, it would be quicker most of the time for the medic at Westwood to respond than it will be for either Minkwist. And actually, now that I think about it, until you get out to like Keystone area, there's really not any other medics.
So how do, because they're not in our service?
So they would be dispatched as a medic, not as the ambulance. And if Washington Hose, you could have the example where both Westwood and Washington Hose show up to the same call because Westwood has the medic, Washington Hose does not. Now, Washington Hose, you know, come three, six, nine months from now, they will have a medic on every ambulance, and that Westwood would probably retreat back to their area unless on the second call, it becomes AVL, which Westwood would pick up. So that's just where we are. We have, they, the Minkwist, the Washies, and the Westwoods have to come up with a plan to pick up those 5,000-plus calls a year.
So, and again, this is just for me, because, you know, this does throw a whole nother equation in. So being we're not AVL, somebody in, up near the VA gets a call for a medic, who's getting dispatched first?
Whoever is the closest medic.
Okay.
So most likely what would happen is Washington Hose would be dispatched, and so would Westwood. And so they would both be there, because it depends on what the call is too.
Oh, I...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
You know, if it requires a medic, then Westwood would be also dispatched to come cover that medic seat.
And again, I'm just trying to look into this future of... And I just don't know. I have, everywhere I've been in the state of Pennsylvania, it's gone AVL.
So the county, I guess, I'm just hearing this secondhand, but the county and most of the ambulance companies in this area, two weeks ago, had a meeting at the Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company where they all agreed that they don't want to see municipalities go AVL. And that they don't want to, they want to do that. And the primary reason for that is they have to be able to build a certain number of staff. If it's just a free-for-all, they don't know what their revenue looks like, what to anticipate, where to send donations. Because it, they just, they want some stability where they can be financially viable.
And they...
So that goes, I'm sorry, Mark, that goes in total contrast, though, to what the counties report on EMS says.
I'm just, and again, I...
And I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what is our best arrangement. I mean, because, because like you said, Josh, there's gonna come a day, we're gonna have to make contributions, and we need to figure out what is best for our residents in that process.
So in the people that I have talked to, I have said, we would, this board needs a presentation on what that looks like.
Exactly.
How your business model is, you know, and how would you fulfill those calls? And Westwood is ready to make a presentation. Minkwist, I think, is in process of thinking of doing that as well. And the other thing is, I mean, this is not just our fault, but we don't, we don't talk to our ambulance companies at all as a board. We don't see them. We see monthly the fire department, and we get the, Ray gives us the numbers on the medic versus ambulance and stuff like that. But we have almost, I've been here 17 years. I have never seen a presentation by any ambulance service. You know, I talk to them. I'm a member at most, at two, Thorndale Fire Company as well as Westend Fire Company in Coatesville. But we just don't, we don't have a presentation. We don't know what, really what they do, how they operate, why they need, why they're asking not to be AVL. You know, we don't, we don't know any of that. We're just sitting in this room speculating and hearing secondhand.
Exactly. It's just best to have them in front of us.
Yeah.
So the meeting with the county, was that all ambulance agencies in the county?
So it was, I don't know, I'm just, what I'm told is, Westwood was there, Minkwist was there, Euclid was there, Washies were there. So it was a regional thing, I believe. So, and...
I mean, because really, this is more than just a Callan problem.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, this is a Coatesville, Callan, South Coatesville, you know, like, the COG, you know, would be, and I know they tried to do that in the past, but this really should be something, you know, that is a great multi-municipal that everybody should be working to determine.
The problem is, if West, or if Tower had given us till December 31st, we could have done this. But, you know, we got less than 50 days to figure out what to do, and whether we can make sure that everybody is served. And I think we should hear from, I know they were on a call with Representative Williams, but we don't know that. We're just hearing what was said at that call. They need, really, and it is on them to come to us, you know, and make presentations so that we know what is going on with their services.
And this is just me, again, totally, but shouldn't the leaders of the municipalities involve, should be sitting together for these?
So...
Because you're all affected the same way. You should all be figuring out what geographically works for your resident.
So everybody pays, I know everybody in Westwood Territory and most in, I won't say most, I know that several in Minkwist Territory, they do, they all have EMS taxes and/or allocate from their general fund to the ambulance services. And I guess what some of these places are getting is pushback in that they're gonna have to pick up all these calls, these 5,000 calls, and they're paying for the service where we are not. And they feel like they're gonna get the short end of the stick, but they're paying for it, but the calls, they would be answering calls in our township. So that, that is, that is, from what I hear, there are rumblings at other municipalities, whether they've come to COG and said that or not, I don't know. But there are rumblings that they don't want people who aren't paying to get that service if they're not paying for it, and not helping to sustain it.
And I don't disagree, and Callan is a unique situation where the economics of the west end of the township are very different than the east. And the east end, everybody wants, because that's mainly insured payers, versus the west end, you have more people that may not be insured. And, you know, how do we create health equity here for our residents?
So...
And that was a large part of the conversation. I did sit in on the town hall that Rep. Williams had. And the health equity is a huge part of that, basically, you know, getting back to saying the municipalities need to contribute, what they're saying is, everybody wants the good end. Nobody wants the end where people may not have insurance, or have Medicaid or Medicare, because then you're getting $90 a run, which doesn't even cover anything, or someone who, like me, is very fortunate, has healthcare, they can charge the whole freight. So I'm a moneymaker for it. And that is a large concern here, is that, again, we've got this county that's the tale of two cities. You know, how are we creating health equity?
So I was on a committee to discuss that, and we were working with Tower Health, and then they closed. So, and that really, I mean, talk about health equity. You live in Coatesville or in Callan Township, and you don't have a car, and you take the bus everywhere, and now you're in an ambulance on the way to Westchester? First of all, you know, how do you get home?
Yeah.
How do, how do people, your relatives, come see you? I mean, you could take the bus to Westchester and walk miles, you know, to Chester County Hospital. There is a bus that runs out there from Westchester. But, you know, you're three bus transfers to get to, to get to the person at Chester County Hospital. So, I mean, it just, it is, Tower Health really, I just want to be careful about the word I use, but they just really took our community for granted. They sucked all the money that they could out of here, and then they left. And they left us with a mess.
You know, it would also be interesting to see, because, and people kind of clam up when I ask these questions, because I had a discussion earlier in the week with someone who was saying, you know, we should be contributing. And they were saying, well, you know, we have all these runs now to Paoli and Westchester. I said, well, were your residents ever coming to Brandywine? And they said, well, no. I said, so you don't have really a time difference, because your ambulances are going to the same hospitals they always were going to. You know, it's the people on this end of the county that were going to Brandywine. So, you know, there's a lot of dynamics here that I think we need to, again, to create that health equity, that we need to look at. We are in a situation where we have multiple providers. You know, we've really got to make sure that all of our residents are getting that equal access, regardless of what end of the township they live.
And I totally agree with that, but my suggestion at the last meeting and again tonight is, this could be a two-hour discussion. It could be a 10-hour, you know, like, if we set aside another night, and we say we cap it at two hours max, we can, we can get them to come in and talk to us and, you know, make sure that the, like Kristen said, the equity is something that happens here, as well as, we don't want to see where, all of a sudden, now we can't afford, the ambulance services can't continue to operate. So, and I'm not looking to spend, you know, I will say, in the time that I've been here, I, and Kristen, and Lisa, and people before, I'm one of the cheapest people, you know, and I try to make money, make money stretch as far as it can here. We've done a very good job of that, you know, during, during the 08 recession and again during the pandemic. We really, we burnt the furniture, you know, to make sure that the light stayed on and we didn't expend more than we needed to and harm our residents during downtime. So I'm not looking to, you know, I guess, the added tax and spend, you know, that, but we do have an obligation to make sure that our residents are safe and that they have the same access to all the services that are needed.
You know, it equally would be an interesting, because again, this is a Western Chester County regional issue. To possibly get what was the Brandywine Foundation, now the Health Equity Foundation involved in this, you know, because we need somebody to crunch this data and figure out what is the most viable. Because, of course, if you ask the individual company, they're gonna carve out which areas have the best insurance rates.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna put it out there. I'm sorry. And that's, that's business. They're trying to, and there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's just it. So, you know, you guys have to be the ones to ask those hard questions and look at the hard data and figure out, because, you know, the, it's funny, because there's a couple of communities even that have their own ambulance that are still AVL. And I had that discussion earlier this week too, and when I said we weren't AVL, the person almost fell over and said, you gotta be kidding me. So that's why I, and I get what they're saying. They don't want everybody going AVL automatically because they don't know what can be handled. I get, I understand that. But there's also a game that the medics play with each other, that they hear one gets a call, and they'll immediately take, that other company will take their unit and park near their building to wait for the next call. So there's a game that gets, and that's just it. That's the game that gets played.
But I guess, to me, what's weird is that Washington Hose opens a substation. Did any of you meet with them to talk about that?
No.
Minkwist is putting an ambulance in Thorndale Volunteer Fire Company. Did Minkwist call and talk to any of the board?
Well, no, because it was the greatest secret held on earth in Callan.
So I...
I had six people call me to tell me that they swore me to death that I couldn't speak of it.
I just think it's weird that the two main providers for us, in 17 years, I've never seen them in this room.
And I don't disagree with that, Josh. It's, for whatever reason, and even during all of this, it has all been backroom discussions. And that's what's not right. There is nobody who's sitting here, and I agree 100%, and I have to laugh when you talk about, you know, Minkwist is putting, that was the greatest secret, not secret, kept on earth. Everybody was terrified to talk about it, but talking about it, but you can't hear it from me. First off, we fund them with public money. There should be nothing that should be kept from us, and it should be talked about on this floor. And the residents should know why we are making the decisions we're making. They should be able to sit in and say, you know, what is going on and what was our rationale for this, that, or the other? Because ultimately, if something happens that someone, that a call gets skipped, it doesn't go AVL, it doesn't, whatever, they could come back and say, you created a situation where I had to wait 15 minutes for an ambulance. And that is such an extreme example. That is like the most, that is chicken, chicken little falling from the ground, that really, or the sky, excuse me. It's a completely dramatic chicken little, but it could happen that if a resident... There's this guy named Tony that likes to come and talk about things, and he has another brother, and his name's Boney. And Boney shows up, and Boney wants to know, well, why did this company come to my house and not this company when there was a unit right there? What would our answer be? And I think we need to, I agree, Josh, we need to have, you guys, and I shouldn't say you guys, the elected officials of this community are saddled with that responsibility, and everybody's going on secondhand knowledge. And what are, what are we doing here?
Yeah, I hate the idea of pulling the rug out of, on all these crews and going to AVL at once, but at the same time, these crews aren't doing anything to help the township or any of the communities. They're all just, me first, I'm in it for the money, you send me, you know, I want them to get donations. But if they're holding back, then maybe they all need to get together and pull their donation. But if they're holding back, then maybe they all need to get together and pull their donation money. And and just eh, split it so that everybody is participating. Because it's the health and well-being of our 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 citizens that comes first. And in this situation we're in, Bankview Tower Health, um. Well, you know, we can't try to protect people who aren't helping us. So I I think, I think we need to get them in here, like Mr. Young, uh, Commissioner Young said, and.
But to to Mr. Young's point, the times I have had representatives from. Companies A, B, and C show up, it is to try to posture for us to change. Service areas, create ins, y- you know, and I said.
I just think that that is weird, that they will talk to you, but they have yet to ever come to this board.
And this is a board that doesn't really. Engage in much posturing with people.
And first off, that's way in the early parts of my tenure also, that I just said, I'm not in this fight. And and when I went.
They need to get in here.
Yeah, and but but when I went to other people and said, what what's the deal here? And they said, that's too much politics. You don't wanna touch that with a ten foot pole. Let it go. So, so that is now me who's tapped in and engaged here as tapped in as engaged as you can be. Is told, don't even touch that subject. And that's what I'm getting at. What do we, like, this is this um, ten million dollar question that I just don't understand.
So I I think what we need to do is pick two dates so that we can see if they, when. Cause I don't wanna just give one date and then one isn't available. I don't think it's worth doing if if not everybody's here. So maybe we pick, if Kristen, could you send a doodle poll out? And then we'll pick two dates and then we can go to them and ask for them to.
So who do we want invited to this, though?
So it would be the, it would be Minquist, Washington Hose, and Westwood.
I said somebody else for. When that, I thought there were four you had mentioned before.
Wagintown, but that's this, that is.
That's that's Westwood. Okay, alright. Yeah, they're in Wag, they put a substation in Wagintown's fire.
And can I also make a suggestion? That we have them at, give them a half hour each and not have them all together, because it'll be a bloodbath.
I think you give them fifteen, twenty minutes, and if they run over to a half hour, they run over to.
Cause I think it will be a pure bloodbath and and, you know, not saying that. Again, cause they're they're still everything and and maybe what needs to come out of this in in communities where we, where I've been, where we didn't have our own ambulance. Or that we did not directly contract with somebody or that we didn't, you know. There was a a board and and the one that uh, that has been the most successful and has won awards all over Pennsylvania is the MERTA Board. Which is Medical South Rescue Team. And they are in the South Hills of Pittsburgh and they, for this exact reason, this is what happened. Everything collapsed in, a bunch of the hospitals were being bought up by UPMC. UPMC was getting out of the medic business. You know, and they formed, this is exactly what happened to make them form the MERTA Board. And we paid a fee to be in MERTA and it it wasn't cheap, but we had excellent. Absol- excellent medical and it was twelve communities in the South Hills of Pittsburgh.
Now, I I'm just going off the top of my head and and there's a lot of things I don't know. Thank God, cause that's a good reason to keep living, cause I keep learning things. But um, if, is it uh, within the the realm of. Uh, legality to uh, have, who's the fire board person here? Have Commissioner Mullin reach out to them? And say, look, we're in the, on the brink of making major decisions here. If you want to be considered, you will present.
Oh, I think they will.
If you do not, there, then you're you're out of consideration and and just get it straight, right up front, right off the bat. Like, here's two dates, pick one and let me know that you're available for both of them. Or you're out of consideration, cause we can't play around with this and, you know, I wanna get, I wanna get it straightened out.
So Josh, other than just simply their time needing to ramp up, which we we all can understand that. Why wouldn't we be ABL?
Why wouldn't you? So um, I think one of the unknown things is, are they financially viable? Without a certain territory. So, so in the example of here, before, before they were moving to Thorndale, uh, essentially Washington Hose would take over most of Callan Township. And uh, they would probably, Minquist would. Either have to go to their municipalities and ask for more money to sustain what what they have. Because the the other thing is they have donation cards that go out, you know, that that would all be gone because they would uh. Nobody's gonna donate multiple times to multiple fire companies and under ABL, at least one of the companies said they will not reciprocate. Uh, the memberships. Right now.
That's what I was talking about. As a.
Getting them into reciprocal.
I, oh, that's, that's horrible, because I could tell you, in in Pittsburgh, there is probably ten different MERTA now type. Situations, multi municipal, they all. In in different areas of Pittsburgh, they all, if you have a a membership at MERTA and you're in the North Hills of Pittsburgh, they will accept that membership.
So under today's, let's say. Let's say the call comes in, is at the VA and Washington Hose is not available. The next, then it goes to ABL under the next call, which would probably be Westwood. If that person says, oh, I'm a member at Washington Hose, Westwood says, great, it will cover that cost for you. But under that system, Minquist is answering some, or Westwood is answering some calls. It's not their primary territory, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, so they um. It's not a free for all on who's coming and when and um, where, but now with with um. Minquist putting a a truck at uh, the Volunteer Fire Company, really um. They would maintain then the western end uh, or the eastern end of the township, because between their two stations, they would, they would be the dominant place there. But just in talking with people, there, they are, without a territory, they don't know how to project revenue. Um, and they just uh, don't think that that all of them would be financially viable anymore.
But, but again, how do we get out of this situation where the tail's not wagging the dog?
So I, so that, a- at least one of them wants to make a presentation to show us how that, how that system works. And why that they they believe and the other area, other. Uh, ambulance services in this area believe the same thing. So I I I'll leave it to them. They they can articulate it better than I.
But I think that we, even if it's a situation where we get a couple municipalities together, we get somebody who is a mind outside of all of us. To evaluate this, to say what is best for this region. Because these guys are gonna, and I hate to say that, but it's it's, I'm gonna do what's best for Callan Township. There, again, the the first concern was financially, they won't be able to succeed.
So and he- here's an example of that under ABL, right? Westwood really isn't interested in covering Callan Township. They they already have all their municipalities. Under an ABL system, all of a sudden now they're covering a lot of Callan Township, uh, because they're closer to. Uh, the northern part of the township than the rest, so they don't know how to staff for that under an ABL system. They don't know how their revenue would look, what donation based or um, and they weren't looking for this territory. Right? So that this overst stretches them for the territory that they already. So, so and and their thing is, if it's ABL, it has to be the whole county. You can't have just Callan Township, ABL. And then basically, we're pulling ambulance services from people who are paying for that service and and base their pay off of. Knowing what the territory was so that they had enough ambulances and crew to man.
And and not that I I don't disagree with any of that. I I totally agree with any of that. How do we still say to a resident? That needed a defibrillator, why did somebody drive past me? And I had to wait six or seven minutes and and I feel honestly, and I'm I'm not trying to belittle, I'm not trying. There are the same as, I go on ICMA and they give me the formulas to show that if I have. X amount of residents coming in, I have X amount of population coming in, I have X amount of housing assessment coming in. This is the number of employees that I will need to service the community. EMS has the same thing, so I think they can. And and that is my ultimate goal, because whatever happens here will end up being what's here for ten to twenty years. I I think that the municipalities, as in the elected leaders of the municipalities, need to come in control of this. Because the people making the money off it should not be controlling it.
So in the case of like Downingtown and then Westwood who covers all, they they've all agreed, this is the area that you're going to cover. We understand that sometimes Washington Hose is not gonna be available and you're gonna have to run an ambulance down there because they're not available. Um, and neither was Minquist, uh, especially with the wait times at the ER now in Chester County and Paoli. But those municipalities banded together and they, they talked to Westwood and they figured out how much money it would cost, how many calls there are. And they've hired based on that. If we go ABL, we are now taking what other people have. Figured out how much they need and what their their services are and we're now using them and and currently not paying for that. So we're we're draining resources from other municipalities that don't wanna be ABL and want to continue to be in a territory.
But again, that's why I feel like as the western region, elected officials need to speak to each other about. What the plan is.
I I don't disagree with you, but I I that, that's not gonna happen in less than fifty days.
Alright, but yeah, let me, let me, let me interject here real quick. You know, one, uh, let's just set this up. We we have basically, what, six weeks? Really just three meetings left before September first, so.
I'm not gonna be here for the next three anyway.
So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to set this up with the, these free services. Uh, if you have the information, you can forward it to me or you and I can both reach out, cause I think you know more.
Yeah, I'll I'll get you the information. The only, I can get the information on Washington toes. I don't really have uh, a good contact there, but I can get you that.
Okay, alright, and let's, let's try to move this. I know, yeah, Ms. Kennedy.
What role does Chester County Emergency Management Services play in all of this?
Very limited, and and because this, this gets extremely, and and just to be brutally honest, it's very political. And it's very cutthroat because this is how these people are paying their employees. So everybody's vying for the good areas. I mean, they're they're they're, I and I just have to call it out for what it is.
So when you call nine one one, doesn't it go through Chester County?
Chester County does, but you understand, Jane, what we do, we t- we take our community. We split it in half. Half goes to Washington, half goes to Minquist, okay? But sitting here, even though i- if I don't need a medic, agreed. I just need simple EMS care, sitting in this building, even though. Washington Hose is across the street, I have to wait for Minquist to drive to here because that's where the split is. Now, if Minquist isn't available, then it rolls over and goes to advanced location, which is whomever is closest. Okay, so that, that's the thing. ABL goes with, and and I've seen it where I've been sitting and seen a call come in. There are people, not Washington Hose, not Minquist, who are here having lunch at Kelly's. And I will sit and watch that a Minquist unit has to come from, and and this isn't, this is just what happens, okay? Has to come from Downingtown to get to the call. And there's a unit sitting at Kelly's, so my fear is that somebody. Figures this out at some point. And comes and goes, you guys could have sent the nearest unit to my house and and you chose not to. What is our answer?
So I I guess.
Cause I just, I don't have a.
I'll let them articulate that to you, but um, you know, I, what I'm looking at is. It's, and I I looked at some of Minquist's numbers, is if you're, and this is prior to them putting a s- uh, substation here. But if they're financially not viable anymore, then we run into a whole new problem. Because not only are they not there anymore, but those communities that are served by them now run into the same problem. And if you try to come back to them and say, no, 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 don't close, well, now instead of um. You know, uh, trying to prop them up, now you've got a huge startup fee for it's starting somewhere else. But I I I totally agree that the the county, it needs to be kind of a countywide or a county regional. Plan.
So if you look at the county, and I'm sorry, Josh, if you look at the county's EMS plan, it encourages ABL. But nobody is gonna force that. Because it is a local decision. It is each locality's decision how they wish to provide emergency services.
Who around us, what townships are around us are ABL and what are not?
I would have to do the poll to find out.
I I am not aware of any.
That would be great information to have when we have this meeting. So, and and maybe the first, uh, my, the first, our first meeting in August.
I just don't want this to become a two hour meeting inside of the meeting.
Very, it is a dense subject. It is very difficult. It is very. Yeah, a- and that's just it.
Or choose another night.
I- it's really hard and it's very gripping. It's very heart wrenching and there's like. No exact right answer, cause I completely understand, Josh, where you're you're coming from with the financial capacity. But equally, if. My mom's at my house and she goes down and I know that there's somebody sitting at Kelly's that could come to my house and I'm, I'm, no, actually, I'm on the other side of the street, so it doesn't matter. But tha- that is where you go, like, what, and that is the, that is the problem.
And I think we need to ask them, what's your financial viability? Because there was some question of what, whether Washington Hose was, they were, most of their work was for Tower Health. You know, transferring patients to other hospitals, so are you financially viable or are you not? We we don't know the answer to that.
And that was a lot of what was being based on the call with Rep Williams was the health equity of. How much of Coatsville was gonna be losing in Tower Health? And could Minquist and Wagintown continue, and they both on that call. Said inequivalently, there is absolutely nothing provi- nothing stopping them from providing service. There, and I quote, do not worry, and it mainly was Coatsville residents on there, which is way farther than Callan. Do not worry, somebody is coming for you.
So I I'll just say on that call was, I believe, Washington Hose and Minquist, Westwood was not invited, but they were on the call.
Yeah, they were on the call.
But a- and I talked to the gentleman who was on the call and he said, he didn't speak at all at that to the. We have no problem covering that because he's now saying they they're going to have a problem. Cause they're trying to staff up and they can't, they can't get it, they can't hire anybody. They, even if you wanted a new ambulance, you're a year away. You know, like that, that is part of the problem and that's, you know, again, not anybody's fault except Tower House. So I'll just.
No, I agree with you.
I mean, thi- this is just, and again, this is what we have to educate ourselves on, and that's why I'm saying maybe we need to get a consultant. Even if the cog splits the, you know, whatever, we need someone on an unbiased way to evaluate this for us. Because it's, it's, it is, everybody is saying everything you don't wanna, i- i- it, everybody's gonna, it's dog eat dog right now. And I'm the first to it, first to say it, and. That is what I can't in a rational way wrap my head around is I don't care. If if I'm John Doe with somebody down at my house. I don't care who's financially viable. I don't care. I want the closest unit. And we allow that for the second call, but not the first, and I think that's the answer we have to be able to give to people. Why have we chosen to split the community like this? That that is.
Well, we can sit here and speculate all night long.
I have three dates I'd like to to suggest. Maybe we can pick two of these three and then get them out there.
Okay.
Uh, Wednesday, August tenth. Tuesday, August sixteenth, or Wednesday, August twenty third.
And sixteenth and twenty third.
I'll send a doodle poll tomorrow. It's just my concern is every person's gonna come in here with their dog and pony and say they're the greatest thing on earth. I don't think we're gonna get that answer.
And we should have our questions ready for us.
Yes, exactly.
We're, we're not gonna get the answer from them. You guys, and I hate to say you guys, but. You need to walk, reach into that EMS community to figure out what's the best thing for us.
Right.
Okay, uh, let me get to a resident here. Tony, uh, come up to the podium, please. You have a comment? Address, please, I'm sorry. You you know the.
We wanna hear.
Hold it down until it lights.
Josh, you said Westwood makes a contribution to uh.
Talk into the microphone.
Did Westwood make the contribution to the uh, ambulance service?
No, so municipalities uh, are that are covered by Westwood, make donations to Westwood.
How do they do that, through the?
So they have what's called an EMS tax, sort of like our fire tax. They have an EMS tax that that money then is handed over to wa- uh, to Westwood.
How much is that?
So I don't know, I, in, I don't know each. So I don't know, I in, I don't know each one of their taxes because it's all separate and it's based on population and and things like that. But it could be as little as, you know.
I mean, if Callan can, Callan can do the same thing. They could use their services.
Well, so what they're saying is um. Westwood is really not interested in in Callan Township. They don't mind being.
Or Washies.
Yeah, so um, what they do is they have a per capita uh, what they need to be financially viable. In your municipality. So what they do is they say, you you, so we're going to cover five thousand residents. It's ten dollars a resident.
Okay.
And then that's how they they do their formula to figure out whether they can afford um, to service that area. So W- Westwood is a very large um, territory. Um, they're basically. The whole western half of of um, uh, Chester County at this point, especially for the medic. So um, I know that Valley Township has the tax, West Callan. I believe West Callan takes it out of their general fund. Um, and I know that some of the other townships have EMS taxes that they use that to to directly pay. Westwood um, how help offset the cost.
Like like Kristen said, if you have insurance, now ambulance come, you're in my network. You know, because you you get stuck paying.
Right.
That's the first, you know, oh, I know. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Denise, you know where he lives. All right, and did we have another hand raised? I I could have sworn.
Mark Young had his hand up at one point.
I I don't see anybody else with their hand up at this time. Does any residents have any discussion on this matter?
Didn't look like it.
Nothing.
Even they're perplexed.
Okay.
It is a very complex system and and for years it was done by volunteers, but that doesn't exist anymore, just like our fire service.
And it's a very heart wrenching discussion. It it's very, very hard. Um, and that's why sometimes in in a situation like this. It's not a bad idea to get an outside consultant who can help you get to that right answer.
We need that, we'll get to that point.
Yep.
You know, ju- just for the public's knowledge, uh, presently. Was the Washies are a substation right here, right behind Giant Shopping Center on the uh. What the west side of Municipal Drive and Minquist had moved over to the Thorndale Fire Department. So they are on the uh, the east side. So the territories are still split right down Municipal Drive. Everyone uh, residents are still being taken care of uh, both. And uh, once again, if if the Washies or Minquist cannot make that first call, it does go to ALS and you are taken care of at that point. Just make sure everyone's updated. All right, questions?
No. So we're going to get those, check those dates out, right?
I think we beat the skin off this horse.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
We're going to do it again.
Oh, several times. And unfortunately, that's what you have to do to get to the right decision. And it it's, you gotta talk this out and there's so many angles. It's just really tough.
And again, a twelve thirty one end date would have been so much more helpful, you know, but Tower Health decided not to do that.
I'll shoot you those three dates.
I wrote them down.
Okay, great. Eight, ten, eight, sixteen, eight, twenty.
Tenth, sixteenth, twenty third. Can we give people if there's a possibility of having it? Well, we always do everything hybrid. They should try to make it in person, but giving people the option sometimes.
Absolutely.
Again, these guys work crazy shifts. They don't work nine to fives. They're twenty four hour operations, so just.
Right.
Yep.
To give them that opportunity.
Good. Good to pay. All right, next on the agenda, uh, minutes to approve. Uh, for from the uh, Board of Commissioners meeting on June thirtieth. Any additions, corrections needed? I did uh, pass along the one typo I.
Nailed that over to Ms. Miller.
Perfect, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve. So moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Ms. Uh, minutes are good, are approved, five zero. All right, next we have Finance Department, Ms. Swan. Just a check run? Commissioners, any questions on that?
No.
I I did have one. Um, check number forty eight, four nine three on the first page, historical commission change. And I guess it was a newspaper ad.
Oh, we changed the date of the meeting. That's what that would have been.
Okay.
I'd re-advertise.
He misses nothing.
Yeah.
Change?
What?
Change?
Good.
Don't think about historic. We don't want anything to change historically. There's a pun in there.
It was is for parking fee, you know, eighty quarters. Petty cash.
And I I see a lot of, I see a lot of the uh, contributions came out this time around. For the uh, library, privileged uh, citizens.
Wait, well, we gotta talk about that.
Oh, okay.
Privileged citizens?
Yeah, we we have four thousand dollars, twenty twenty two contribution.
That I I'm sorry, I'm gonna request that's polled because I don't know if they're meeting anymore.
So I would make a motion to amend my motion, which would exclude check number.
Uh, four eight, four nine seven.
Four eight, four nine seven. Jane just needs to agree the second.
Agreed.
To friendly amend that.
Wait a minute, I I thought you approved the minutes. We haven't.
Oh, we didn't get.
Yeah, we we didn't get to the checks yet.
So I would make a motion then to approve the check run minus the check just stated.
Okay, any questions on that, Commissioners? I think that's the only one I had circled. So I have a motion. A motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And a check run is approved, five zero. All right, uh, next on the agenda, we have Boarding Commissions update, starting off with Park and Rec.
With Park and Rec, so I just want to remind everyone that uh, we have a concert on August the fifth, which he goes vibe. It'll be held at the Callan Municipal Park, starting at seven o'clock PM. Followed by fireworks. We're looking for everyone to come out, enjoy the nice summer weather. They're. Coming quickly and they're leaving quickly. So, you know, let's spend as much time together as a community and. Support the uh, activities that the uh, Park and Recreations have, you know, put together for our families. Also on uh, September tenth, there'll be the fourteenth annual Callan Community Day. Which will be held at the Municipal Park as well, from three to eight PM. We're asking all businesses and organizations that are interested in sponsoring or vendoring. To please reach out to Abby here at the Township so that we can get you on board. We want to make it a great event and we need your support. Also want to congratulate the Callan baseball team. Must have had the magic touch on that ball that.
That was it.
First throw ball for winning the district and the regional title. Go Callan.
Yes.
And uh, they're going now for the state championship, so we send you best wishes and come back as champions. Uh, also, um. We're meeting again, I believe, the beginning of August for Park and Recs and will continue to um. Find ideas and things of interest to, you know, keep the community active and a. An enjoyable time for the remainder of the summer season and to the remainder of this year. Also, I just wanted to mention, if you haven't seen the newsletter, please go online, make sure that you can uh, review it. Lot of good information. And because we do support and sponsor the Coatesville Library, there's. Some great uh, activities and events going on for everyone in the family. I don't have the whole list in front of me, but. They have some interesting topics for teens and adults and young people, some uh, activities I uh. Would like to participate in as well, where you could take youngsters to uh, hear about under the world adventures and. Information from um, I think they have teens and tot uh, activities going on. These are all onsite, I believe. And they'll be doing also educational uh, workshops. On addressing and preventing teen dating and teen uh. Options to get online where they can ask questions. So we're dealing with a major mental health crisis with our adolescent population. So parents and teens, this is a good opportunity for you to get on board or sit down with your young folks and. Come out and let them have an opportunity to share with other young people some of the issues and concerns. That they've had over this, you know, critical time, especially during the pandemic. And once they know that they're not in this alone, it does help them to look at a brighter future for themselves. So. Please uh, go on our website, look at the new news newsletter that has just been released. There's great things there, lots of information, so make sure you take a moment to do that. Thank you.
Paul, just one thing, um, I, so um, you all know I'm on the Downingtown Library Board and they have asked uh, to come speak to us. Uh, the, we have a brand new director, um, and uh, she would like a date when she can come talk to us. Um, before our budget season, obviously, so. Uh, if if you and Ms. Danny could maybe pick a date and I can let her know. What whatever meeting works for you.
All right, you got that, Ms. Danny?
Sure.
All right. Sometime in August, she's.
Yeah, I'll. Uh, you know, uh, she can make it work, um, whenever we decide. She just was asking for a date to come talk to us.
Yeah, because September, October, you know what happens.
Yeah.
Budget done, okay. Uh, next we have Cog.
Okay, before, before I go any further, I just wanted to say that uh, the governor's report did show that the level up. Money that was going to be going into the uh, Coatesville Area School District. Uh, looks like almost a fourteen point three percent interest. So we're looking to see all this money come into the district and hopefully it'll help. With some of the taxation issues that we're having, as well as improving some of the curriculum. You know, deficiencies, you know, within our district and we can get some of the materials and things that are needed to help. Students succeed on some of these um. Testing uh, requirements that are necessary for even more funding to come into the district. So that was just released from the governor's report as to the. Balance with the uh, some of the um, other school districts in our area. As well as some of these um, charter schools. So, you know, some of the things that were being done to advocate for this funding and for the equality of it. Um, kudos to everybody that pressed that one and got the the signatures that they needed and got the message out there clear. Because it did result in a fourteen point three percent increase with the level up. Grant that was just approved and funded by the governor.
Quick question on that. Uh, how much of that are we losing to charter schools?
That's a good question. I mean, but I I didn't read the whole report, but.
Flag.
Yeah, but I didn't read the whole report, but it was just, it was worth noting that.
Going to go to the two charter schools.
Yeah, but.
So.
But they did hear the residents, they did hear the taxpayers. And for the signatures and those people that were advocating, you know, for our district.
Really glad.
You know, they did a great job. And I know Laura Shannon Bailey, where are you? Um, she she worked endlessly to try to get a lot of things, you know. So that we could have some equality in, you know, educational services.
We need it.
In our district. Uh, for Cog, uh, again, there wasn't much going on. It was a lengthy discussion that was held by Rachel Griffiths. This was on uh, June twenty second, um, and she's the Sustainability Director from Chester County. And, you know, most of the time she spent talking about uh, how municipalities could tap into resources. You know, through her office to sustain our municipalities through o- our open space, through trails, through. Landscaping and things of that nature. And what I learned that I I initially thought that these fundings were. Available to us at no cost. But, you know, later to learn, and it sounds so great. I'm like, wow, we gotta get a piece of this. And and we may still need to at some point, but a lot of those programs are like matching grants. Which a lot of times you'll see that unless it's coming through a foundation, that we may need to. Find other resources if we wanted to get into something. But, you know, like thanks to Abby, she spends so much time collaborating with um, Penn State Extension Program. That uh, a lot of the things that she go, and you'll see in the newsletter too, I love these containers. With the uh, rain drainage thing where flowers are just blooming that right at your rain spell. Again, a way to preserve and res- and, you know, use water in a more sensible way, instead of it just running. Down into the sewer drain. Um, and then some of the other projects with the wildflower and the buffering programs. I mean, just so many great things that she just loves to um. Look at ways to sustain within her own interest to the township. So. I'm really appreciative of her, but that's what Rachel Griffiths does as a Sustainability Director. And there may be times, especially with this big trail project, you know, we we've heard discussions about it over and over again. I I don't know what phases it's in today, but I mean, I know it's a continuing thing in the works and. It it'll be great whenever it's finished. I don't want to ride your bike there, right?
Oh.
Okay.
So so funny enough, Rachel, before being promoted into this position, was actually our Trails Coordinator that we worked with.
Okay.
For the Creek Trail.
Okay.
So Abby is.
On.
Worked with her for for three years now, three years plus, but she had had. Had gone over, so we've worked on several grants with her be prior to, this position was just created at the county.
Yes.
So prior to that, in her position as a planner, she actually worked on our Beaver Creek.
Okay.
Plan and worked with Abby on on various grants that they applied for trying to get the funding. The 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 hard part with trails is. You have to pretty much pay for it to get engineered and then they will help you build it. But you've got to put out the.
Fifty percent of the cost.
Oh, no, I'd say million dol- million dollars. To have it. Well, I I mean, I am just being, and then the state does have many grants that are fifty and seventy percent matches. But you have to put up that engineering money first to show it's been designed. And then, so that that's the bigger problem with grants. If you pay to have things engineered, you can get somebody to help you make the cost. It's finding money to have it engineered.
Could we work on an ordinance that restricts Abby Swan from ever leaving Callan Township?
I I I agree and I I truly, you know, and and on that sustainability, I don't know if you guys have noticed. She's done rain barrels outside.
It's in the news.
Yeah, that's what's happening at the rain gutters. I love it.
Yeah.
Play her over for the weekend with some rain bar.
She's done that on her own time. That's that's not like, this is just her passion. It's her thing. Um, her and and it seems like almost every week I come up with some other. Something that I've thrown a wild garden, wild flower garden in somewhere else. Um, you know, I I agree. I mean. Um, I mean, she has an electric car. We'll we'll just cut off electricity.
Yeah, she can't go anywhere.
Yeah, if you can't go anywhere, well, but no, she.
She'll jump on public.
Yeah, I don't think any of us um, realized when when hired her. Five, six years ago, um, how much of an asset that she would be as a citizen to to the community, both her and Brett.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Absolutely.
Um, just great citizens.
Maybe we can get her to go over to the golf course and do a beautiful landscaping project there. That would be awesome.
I'm a, I consider myself a pretty good gardener. I don't know the people that have been to my, Kristen, you've seen.
I've seen, yeah.
Uh, I call Abby to try to figure out how to do stuff.
And truly, there is a whole, it's really, it's really interesting to to see. You know, she's big on the native plants, which are the healthiest things that you can put in the area. Because if you look at how, and again, for flooding and stormwater, native plant roots will go ten to twelve feet into the ground. And soak up where something that's not a native plant, you're lucky if you're getting three or four feet. So what it does for flooding i- is unbelievable that it it and. People look at you like when you're crazy, when you say to them, plant some native plants if you have a a wet spot in your yard.
I have.
It it will absolutely because of the size of the roots.
Not only that, look at the pollination. I mean, even some of the ones around the township, I mean, you know.
So and.
Bees and the butterflies and you know, what they really do for our environment. I mean, we take for granted.
You let me and Abby free, it would be a dangerous place. Because we would literally have green roofs on everything with pollinators on top of them.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, you, and add Brett to that?
Oh, yeah, there there's no thought. No, they they are both.
They're master garden, like literally master gardeners.
Yeah, Penn State Extension, registered master gardeners and she is a registered watershed steward. Um, but their days off, that's what they do is they travel around the county planting flower gardens.
And and while we're talking about nature, uh, I see that the lanternflies are on the move. And they're recommending that you just mix uh, with Dawn soap with some water solution or something and spray. But you can see them now, I I mean, they started out like little red spiders and now they're black and they're moving real fast and. The next phase of their metamorphosis, they're full blown, you know, um, lanternflies.
Yeah.
And they are, they're on the move. I couldn't. full-blown, you know, lanternflies. And they are, they're on the move. I couldn't believe, as many as I saw just last week, I mean, amazing. They're eating away at like this little vine, and they actually literally covered the whole spine. So, just watch your flowers. They're, they're devastating, and they're here, again. The other issue that we discussed a little at COG was the Animal Control Letter Response, which I'm sure, Kristen, we have one here at the Township, and it's just a matter of meeting with them to see as they're going to each municipality, to see if this is something we could do collectively with animal control to save some money again in our, if we can do it collectively instead of individually, for the amount of monies that we're paying to the SPCA. You know, they have this vision, again, of, you know, trying to support each other through this endeavor. So, when we have the opportunity to meet, we'll report back on that again. And when we meet again, I think next week we meet with COG, and I will bring up the conversation to see if we can have a discussion about the ambulance services, to see what other municipalities are facing, and how we can, you know, get together to collaborate, to make sure that we're all getting the best service we can give for our residents. So, I will make sure that I bring that up if it doesn't come up on the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Next on the agenda, Municipal Authority. And that would be myself. The, as we continue the INI Project, we have the 2022 County Interceptor Repair Project, working on Phase Four. The Equix Integrity is scheduled, that's the company, scheduled to begin the Phase Four work as of yesterday, July 13th. 2023, the County Interceptor Repair Project, Phase Five, we have authorized, CTMA has authorized at the June meeting to begin assembling the bid packet and post the bid for the 2023 Phase Five repair contract, with an anticipated bid opening in November 2022 of this year. The sewer repair project will involve the testing grounding for approximately 3,470 linear feet of a 24-inch diameter gravity sewer. Excuse me, the bid will also include an ad alternate option for testing grounding of about 1,500 linear feet of the eight-inch sanitary sewer lines. So, and over at Willow's at Valley Run, CP, CTMA, at the last meeting, authorized the chairperson to sign the financial security agreement and performance bond for the Phase One, onsite and offsite, for the Willow's at Valley Run Sewer Improvements. And that is the update for the Municipal Authority. Do not have an update for Dara at this time. I don't think much has happened since. I think George had missed the last meeting. Yeah, we discussed that at the meeting. Okay. Moving on to Fire Board, I was not able to attend, but Josh stood in for me.
Yeah, so at the last Fire Board meeting, the discussion again surrounded the fire agreement, and I know that Paul and Kristen and Ray are working on that. There was more discussion about the audit, and what was the last? Oh, discussion about the Minquis ambulance being at Thorndale Fire Company, and there was one more item. Oh, discussion about the budget, because the budget, I believe, is due in August. Their budget to, to the Budget Committee is due, or to the staff is due in August. So, there was some discussion around that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. Next, Historical Commission.
Yeah, hi, everyone. The Historical Commission met on Wednesday, June 29th. We had changed our meeting date so that the membership could attend the Chester County Historical Preservation Network Dinner on our regularly scheduled date. At our meeting on the 29th, we had a quorum with all but one member present, and we also had one guest. We heard from all of our subcommittees. Spackman Farm and Marketing and Social Media Subcommittees reported together on the proposed Spackman Farm article, and reported that it had been transmitted electronically to a number of publications. I'm happy to say the, they don't know this yet, but one of those publications is going to be writing an article on Spackman Farm. The Historical Preservation Subcommittee reported on, that the Board of Commissioners has been holding open workshops to work through the proposed ordinance, and we've also been working to absorb suggested tweaks coming out of those sessions. The Lloyd Farms Subcommittee with Tom Parr reported that he's been back in contact with Natural Lands, and Mark reported that the, had run into Catherine Quillman at, at the dinner, and she will be attending our July meeting to share her knowledge of the history there. We also had an update on using PA Share to accomplish many of our stated goals. Wow, it is a great tool, got to tell you. We also discussed our Historical Resource Classification System, which we touched on tonight in the early workshop meeting. We discussed edits to, I'm not here, edits to Chapter 19, and finding a new member with grants experience. Tom Parr reported on certified local government. Additionally, Mark, Dawn, Patty, and Kathy shared some of their experiences from the CCHB and dinner. What a wonderful event that was. Oh, my goodness, you know, to be around that many people with a heart for preservation. And I think they're really glad to see a lot of us there. And we were able to share to the entire room what we've accomplished in the last year and a half. And we were noticed, and I know that, that we have kind of been in the shadows for a long time, but it was a great, great, very exciting night. Our next meeting is next, next Wednesday, July 20th, 7:00 PM, right here, and also on Zoom. And oh, yeah, we need more members. Thank you.
Good plug.
All right, and I guess last, Lincoln Highway.
So, Lincoln Highway, we've been working with Kristen to, to work on the LERTA ordinance and the LERTA resolution. That's well on its way. On 4th of July, right after finishing my 5K, I grabbed Commissioner Mary Moskowitz to say we want to bring our roadshow to the county, and she agreed and said that to contact her and, and Commissioner Maxwell and Commissioner Kikline, and they would see what they could do to set up something for us. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Nothing?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. We, for under additional business, we have a consideration of settlement agreement and acceptance of the resignation of Mitchell Rock as Deputy Chief of County Police Department. Ms. Danny, do you, do you want to elaborate on this?
No, Mr. Rock is, is just leaving to pursue other interests at this point in his career. So, this was a severance agreement that we have come up with, you know, we have given a letter of recommendation and wish him the best interest in his future endeavors.
Yeah, I hate to see him go, really. He's a great... He is so inclusionary, and really a, a great spokesperson for working within the community. But, all things come to an end, except for this meeting.
Here we just keep going. Now, Mitch, Mitch will definitely be sorely missed. I, I've always enjoyed our few conversations. I, I don't get to see him often, but when he came around, he was always a, a great, great person to deal with. So, definitely, definitely will be missed. And I did notice a police chief had written him a beautiful letter.
Oh, it was great.
Yeah, I was impressed with that as well. So, you need us to make a motion to approve this, or is this just discussion item, or I didn't?
Uh, just an approval.
Okay, all right, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
I'm moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's good, 5-0. Mitch, good luck with everything you do in the future.
Yes.
And remember us.
I'll be watching you.
All right, any other additional business? Moving on to public comment. Ms. Danny, do we have any hands raised? Well, we have one here. We can start with Tony. You can check in the Zoom world.
I don't, I really don't understand. Tony DiSario, 251 Loomis Avenue.
Thanks.
Rezoning, explain that to me. I don't under, I don't know what that's about.
Good question.
You're talking about the zoning update that we're working on?
The task force we're working on?
What is it? What is rezoning?
So, it, it's the zoning code that is, governs how everything happens in, in the Township, and we're working on updating that. That, that includes, you know, right now, there's R1, R2, and that based on how many houses you can build, and where, and where apartments can be built. All of that is being updated at this point. So, it, it deals mostly with, with building and land use, is what zoning is.
And the density.
And density.
That's going to be allowed in those areas.
I noticed you're building the homes up here, low-income housing, next to a pot place. I don't know if that's a...
So, it's not low-income housing?
No, it's not low-income housing.
It's, it's a reserved for handicapped, and some are reserved for handicap and lower income, but low-income in Chester County is not very low-income.
It's a mixed income.
I've, I've stated that there's children there, you know, you're next to the, the pot distribution center there.
So, you, in, in the law, you cannot treat pot distribution any different than you would a CVS, a Rite Aid, a Walgreens. So, that's why they're allowed those uses in those.
Thank you for that information.
And, and I, I sit on the County, Chester County Department of Drug and Alcohol Services Advisory Board, and, you know, I'm not a big fan of dispensaries and things, but one thing I've learned is that the most heavily guarded, heavily watched, and possibly the safest place any one of us could be is right outside of one of those buildings, because they've got cameras and drones and, you know.
And people buying pot from the people going in the store getting pot.
You're not going to be able to do that. That's not going to happen.
First off, it, it wouldn't be worth it financially.
Yeah.
It, it is too expensive, it is much more expensive in the paramount of stores.
Yeah.
Cheaper on the street.
Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
Ms. Danny, any other hands raised for public comment?
Yes, Mr. DeYoung?
Ms. Mark?
Hello, everybody.
Hey.
Great. Just a quick question. I'm sure this was probably part of the contract, but if the Assistant Fire Chief resigned, why would there be a severance package? If you quit your job, you get fired, generally get a severance package. But, if you retire, you retire, you know, or resign. And there's generally not a severance package. So, unless it's some type of contract, that seems really wrong.
Well, I, I can't comment on personnel matters in a public forum.
So, how do we get to the bottom of this?
It's a personnel matter. This is, yeah, it, it cannot be discussed.
By law.
Is there a Freedom of Rights request?
You can absolutely put one in, but again, this is personnel-related.
Yep.
But, how do you pay somebody for resigning?
We can't discuss personnel matters. That is, it is by law, we are not allowed to discuss.
Well, I understand personnel matters, but that's ridiculous. Nobody I've ever known in my 40 years of business has ever quit a job and got a severance payment. That's...
I actually have known people who that's happened with. I'm, I'm sure you haven't, I understand that, but like, it's a personal, personnel matter, which means it, everything's closed around it. So, even if we had more to say, we're, we're not allowed to. That's, that's the law, so.
It's a wrong law, in that case, I gotta say. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. I think we had another hand raised?
Ms. Falding?
Yeah, Cheryl, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. I just have a question. Does this person have a contract, an employment contract with, with Callan?
The, the person has an agreement?
I'm sorry, didn't under, I couldn't hear your response.
The person has an employment agreement.
Okay, that agreement is a public document. I looked at your agreement with Callan. So, certainly if someone wanted to write to know, they could ask for that document.
We're, we're not disputing that.
Okay, that's fine. I just was, for Mark's benefit, that document itself is not in any way a secret document. That's all.
Nobody implied that it was.
No, for my benefit, what? Yeah, I, I, I said it's illegal for us to discuss anything about a personnel matter.
No, I understand, but I didn't want Mark to be left with the impression that he has no access to any document.
Oh, he wasn't. He was told to send, to turn, send one in.
Okay, that's fine. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ms. Danny, any other public comments?
Not at this time.
All right, well, if not, I will...
So moved.
So moved. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. Good to see you, man.
Aye, we meet.
That's the what?
The store or the private citizen?
You know, you're still recording.
You're still on here.
Yeah, the meeting's done.